The rest is paid by I-DOT.
We have to put in the budget to spend it out.
Yeah.
From the money that we get.
Just so the city's authorized to cut a check to them, yeah.
The one question I had, the sidewalk Gary, refresh me, is that does for replace, according to the budget here, it's for the Mill Road sidewalk project, is that also sidewalk replacements if we have problems, or is that other, is that other capital project too?
This sidewalk is the Mill Road sidewalk project only. The other sidewalk repair and replacement program is in the general fund.
Thank you.
Sharkey?
Yeah, I'm still questioning the idea of spending $60,000 on the sidewalk over Mill Road, over, on Mill Road over the expressway. I've gone by there again many times and there's plenty of walking area over there. I just can't see the reasoning for that. I have to vote against that one.
Christine Winger?
Isn't the 60,000 for the, you know, replacement sidewalk and maintenance there?
I believe that's the 60,000 with the Addison share cost with the project up on Mill Road.
Correct, there's, it's a C-MAC project that was sponsored by Addison and the 60,000 represents the full portion of Wooddale's share. Because we're not running the project, we really don't have total control over the timing, so staff will now start to carry the total in the budget as we expend it.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Coles?
Getting off the track, just doing on the general fund, why is it decreasing the red light camera, what happened there?
We go, Maggie, are we?
You just gave it.
Joe, could I cut in for a minute? Maggie, weren't we going to finish these and then go back to that?
Alderman Coles, towards the end, we'll go through every one of those, okay?
That's why she handed it out, okay. Any other questions on this? Okay, Maggie, go ahead.
This next slide just basically shows what capital, capital spending has been done in the city for the last nine years and clearly, street projects have been very important. City has been important, water and sewer. Non-home rule sales tax to help fund some of these projects. This is the, what I corrected on the tourism fund, that's 75,000 transfer, so I've given you that revised budget worksheet.
Ms. Winger?
Thank you. So just a clarification, Mr. Home, where do we have it budgeted for the sidewalk, replacement and maintenance?
General fund.
Okay, thank you.
Lucille? Did you have a question?
As far as the, the non-home rule tax of 2.1 million, so if the city's been doing approximately 2 million every year for the water, water mains and streets, now we got this influx of money for capital projects. So the money we used to use goes, all goes to the general fund and, and what, accumulates?
First of all, the city has not done a million dollars of water and sewer, the city needs to, okay? They have not been able to do that. Secondly, this is the capital projects fund we're talking about, has nothing to do with the general fund. So any type of street project goes through capital projects.
Right.
And the water and sewer mains could go through the water and sewer fund if that fund had any money. Okay, but it doesn't have, it does, it nowhere near can afford all of the capital requirements. So along with a street project, this, it's been the city's policy to put in the waters and sewer mains when the road is being done. It just makes good sense to do it all at one time. And that's why the, the water and sewer main projects are $700,000 in this proposed budget. But none of that has anything to do with the general fund at all. And, and as I said, the requirement of the non-home rule sales tax is that it only be used on capital projects. It can't go into the general fund, it can't go to cover operations.
No, I understand that, but if we were doing, well, now you're saying we didn't, $2 million a year between road improvements and why can't, with the extra 2 million that we're getting now, why can't we just 2 and 1/2 or 3 million and get this infrastructure?
Oh, it has to do with the timing, you had the street sufficiency study at the last meeting, all of that plays a part, I'm sure Mr. Home can give you more details, but it, it's not, lack of funds are not what are setting up the timing of the projects any longer, okay, so.
I'm just trying to get more.
Mr. Home, do you care to respond to that too, or? Okay Brad, go ahead.
Alderman, please, or everyone, if you turn to the second page behind the capital projects tab, it's called CP summary, it's the second page, it's the shorter of the two pages. If you go down about 40% of the way through the gridded area where it says total expenditures, if you look across, we've historically been running at about 1.9 million. And then in the blue section, we jump up to 3.1 as a result of the non-home rule sales tax. And you also see a fund surplus of 925,000. So the additional 1.1 million plus the 925 is the 2 million additional. And then as you notice, it does get out further, we do start to vet it out and spend that money out. So historically, we have only been around 2 million and we are beginning to jump up the extra million to 2 million to recognize that additional revenue.
But not 2 million for water and sewer?
Correct.
And that's, that's what I wanted to point out to you. The city needs to do approximately 1 million of water and 1 million of sewer every year, plus streets, whatever they cost, okay? So we're talking about more than $3 million a year that's needed to handle the infrastructure of the city.
That's all I'm looking for. Mr. Johnson?
The note at the bottom of the page is kind of concerning to me about the CTE estimate of $7 million. I think we're kind of putting a stop to that project other than congestion mitigation. Hopefully, they're not going forward and billing us.
We can look into that and make that adjustment, I don't, this may have been an old number.
Any other questions on that one? Okay, equipment replacement.
Okay, this is the fund that handles the equipment needs of all of the general fund departments. So the way it gets its funding is strictly from a transfer from the general fund. This year, there are two new squad cars, one tandem axle semi dump truck, a one-ton dump truck, and $60,000 for the police department radios. I know the chief has made a presentation to you before about that, this project will not be completed for two more years, but it's going to be important that the city have the funding available to get the radios purchased and implemented all at one time. So we're, we're putting 60,000 in there and it will remain in fund balance. And then the following year, another 60, which would be 120,000, and then the last year, we'll take care of the, the final purchase. And I think there's a little bit of a grant involved too in that last year. The other items that are in there are the police department locker room lockers, and then the cameras for the police department, the old style tasers and the flashlights. A couple of items were removed by the police department after we did the first pass on the budget. And I believe that was for the CAD system monitors throughout the PD. Yeah, I think those, that was the only item that was taken out. So this fund essentially, it does get a little bit of interest income after we make the transfer every year, but essentially, this fund is just used to purchase the equipment that goes along with the equipment replacement program, that's the vehicle equipment replacement program, and then any incidental type of equipment that the departments need. You did receive a schedule of all of the city vehicles along with the year of replacement and the approximate cost. That's what the city follows, and this has been found to be the most economical way to keep costs down, keep annual costs down, but keep the equipment operating at the level it needs to be.
Alman Sharkey?
Yeah, I just, I'm just wondering about the, the trucks we're ordering now. We've outsourced the brush pickup and that's costing us another $98,000 added to the budget. It's not a wash as was it portrayed to be because the 96,000 before was our employees, we're adding, actually adding the $98,000 on top of that. And then we're talking about outsourcing, or we're going out for bids for outsourcing landscaping, the grass cutting, basically. And we're talking about, I think we spent $8,000 for that grass cutter if I'm not mistaken, and we're going to have that sitting there. Why do we need these trucks, just to rotate them because the other ones are older, or? I, I can't see where, where we're saving anything by outsourcing anything if we're going to have just as many trucks as before and just as many employees as before.
If you, if you recall from the strategic planning presentation, the purpose of outsourcing wasn't cost savings. The purpose of outsourcing was to provide additional services. In this case, additional services in the form of forestry operations, capital water main and sewer main replacements to be performed in-house, concrete flat work so that we're not making utility restorations eight months after we dig the hole. A whole host of additional services that staff was directed to investigate by council. So you are correct, those privatization efforts are increasing costs, but the benefit is additional services. With respect to the vehicles, 222, which is a 1999 one-ton, one-ton dump truck, that is approximately 10 years old, which has been the city's policy in the past to replace. The replacement vehicle is going to come to Streets as a vehicle for use in hauling and snow operation. This particular one-ton dump truck is going to be used still in the fleet for the rest of its useful life over in the utilities construction side, which is kind of a new thing that we're doing to assist with water main and sanitary sewer construction, hauling gravel, hauling spoils. 236 is already sold out of the city's fleet, we don't have 236 right now. That was our large dump truck, our six-wheel large dump truck. So this is a replacement for a vehicle which we didn't have this past winter that's used primarily during the winter months up in the industrial parks on the, on the wider roadways, the larger roadways.
Alman Sharkey?
So we're, we're getting the dump truck which we only use in the winter time, basically you said?
No, the tandem axle dump will now be used for, again, on utilities construction during the summertime, for water and sanitary sewer, and then the wintertime operations up in the industrial park. It's, it'll serve as the, the city's largest dump truck.
I'm just, you know, in these, these economic times right now, which seem to be pretty poor, I'm just wondering why we're outsourcing and adding to our, our whole budget rather than trying and increasing services. These are forestry services and waters, water and sewer services, which we don't have enough money to do right now anyway, as much as we'd like to. It's, it doesn't, it doesn't add up to me, that's all.
Alman Lucille?
Gary, as far as the extra services, when you say, are these the guys are going to take the pictures on our lines and look for that inflow of water that, or whatnot that we were talking about?
Correct, that's, that's one of the things that we'll be doing, is televising, flushing sanitary sewers, you know, inspecting them for condition. And then the other crew, this new crew, this new service that we're doing in-house, will be to go out and then make the actual repairs. Go out, if there is a hole in the line, or if there is a crack in the line, to excavate and repair the line. And in order to excavate, we need to haul off the dirt and haul in gravel. So that's, that's really what these vehicles would be, would be utilized for. 236 in the past has been utilized for the street department, again, for hauling during the summertime, bringing, bringing in debris or bringing out debris, bringing in gravel, whatever the case might be, asphalt. So it gets used for a variety of purposes, the dump trucks do.
Mr. Luton?
Gary, how much again is this dump truck?
The repli-
How much is the cost?
The replacement one-ton was shown as 85,000 and the replacement six-wheeler, or six-wheel dump truck, or tandem axle dump truck is 120,000.
This will be a 2007, 2008, 2009?
2008 or 2009, depending on when the new model years come out, as to how that timing works.
And what's the used market like? I mean, could you get a 2007 for 65? And depreciate it same way?
I don't know, I can comment on the depreciation, but, you know, the used-
I mean, is there, let's not discuss if there's no used car market, used truck market, is there, is there a used market within current model years, within the last three years? Are there any big fleets, anybody go bankrupt lately that, that maybe they threw one out for peanuts?
I, I would only presume there has to be some used car, used vehicle market out there, I'm sure, I'm sure there's a, you know, market for used vehicles out there. I don't, have never done research to the point of, of telling you specifically yes or no.
Can you find out? Is it worth finding out? Is it worth finding out first and then second, can you find out?
I guess the worth finding out would be a cost saving upfront. I mean, we, again, you're going to have to comment Brad on, on depreciation and how that would, how that really affects us.
If you want 10 years, if you want 10 years on a vehicle and you tell me that 10 years you buy a new one, and you still use the other one until it's absolutely shot, what, what's the economics of buying one that's three years old, 20 or 30,000 cheaper, and then keeping it still 10 years?
But then it's 13 years old by the time we-
You still, even if it's 13 years old, you still project a vehicle to have the capacity to last for 10 years with your high-quality maintenance department?
That's the one downside to buying used, is you're buying somebody else's maintenance for the first three years? You, you don't know if they had a high-quality maintenance department.
I do know that there's a lot of people that aren't making it these days.
Oh, I'm not arguing with you, I, I agree, if, if you would like staff to look into that, we certainly can.
I, I saw another restaurant folded in Bensonville last week, so, you know, and I know that they're dumping their stuff just to get rid of it. Now, this isn't a restaurant, but there's got to be some construction people that didn't make it. I'm sorry for them, but that means that somebody, some vehicles got repo'd. And there must be some banks out there, there must be some kind of a market that you can find out about. If you can save 20 or 30,000 on a vehicle, that's, that's worth three years of depreciation and you still got a good vehicle.
Again, staff can look into that if that's the desire of council, we certainly can.
Gary, when we buy these trucks, we're also buying them at the discounted rate through the state, correct? Is this like the police cars?
It's like the police cars, it's like the, the passenger vehicles, for example, and I'll use my vehicle as an example, my, my truck, which was a '06 F-150, I think retail at the time, if I was Joe Smith and I paid actual sticker price, you know, it was a $35,000 truck, we, the city bought it for $21,000 through the state purchase, again.
That was about a 30% savings to the city?
Yeah, there's a considerable savings through the state purchase program.
So let's say 20%. 35 to 20?
Any more questions on equipment replacement? Okay.
What does everybody feel about looking in the used market? Do we give them authorization to do it? Or, or is it a bad idea?
Christine Winger?
I would just be concerned that we're buying somebody else's problems. So I, I just get concerned when we buy used vehicles. Thank you.
Alman Coles?
Also, when you buy a used truck, you don't buy the truck, you may not find one with the model that you want and with the equipment that you want. So you, in order to put the equipment that you want on it, may cost you more than when you're buying it direct. And first of all, sometime it's hard to find the model that you want. If he wants a, say a F-650 and you can only find an F-550, that's a model that's cheaper and smaller than what you want. So I don't advise used truck. You don't know how it's been driven.
Mr. Home?
Just to follow up on the example I threw out there, it's a 40% discount that we get right off the top roughly through the state purchase. So we're paying 40% less for the vehicle right, right off the top.
Mr. Cadell, did you have your hand up? I'm sorry. All right. Let's move on to the technically fund.
The information technology fund is the fund that handles the computers, telephones, voicemail, any of our electronic systems. Again, this fund gets its money from the general fund transfer on an annual basis. And the proposed budget includes the final payment to Springbrook Software on our financial software. That really was just a matter of timing and the, the vendor negotiated installment payments, so we just have one that's coming past the April 30th deadline for this year, but it's not any more than we had budgeted in the current year. We just moved the 35,000 to the next year. We did discover that Springbrook has some code enforcement software that community development department can use, so they demoed that software and that's included in here for $9,700. The support services, as you know, are provided by an outside service. They, most communities have a full-time IT person, Wooddale does not, so these people support us when we have problems with the servers. We've got more T1 telephone line service, that's because of our data transmission primarily from city services back to city hall. That's becoming a, more and more of a problem with our new software, we need city services to be able to transmit their data quickly. Scanning services are included in the budget, we've been doing some scanning every year, trying to keep records, instead of keeping paper in boxes and then using up valuable space in city services or in the, the bomb shelter in, in city hall, we're trying to scan as many documents as we can. So every year, a certain amount of documents are getting scanned and stored that way. And finally, we have a continuation of the computer equipment replacement and/or upgrade. This was a commitment made several years ago by the, by the city council to modernize the computer system and then keep it in good repair by replacing things as and when they became obsolete. So Mr. Murmurs probably has more details on that for you, but this is an ongoing program.
I have one question, the scan service, for scanning, Jeff, is that going scanned up, how much of that project's going to get completed then with scanning for that price? It was 10,000?
For the 10,000?
Are we looking, are we looking at taking it off?
A couple of years of building department files.
Okay.
Couple of years.
So this will be the first year we'll be actually scanning really heavy then?
We've done it in the past, we initially started out with outsourcing it to a professional firm, that worked well, then we got off that for a little while, tried volunteers, tried, you know, summer interns. That worked okay, but it wasn't as efficient as, as, you know, outsourcing it to a professional firm, so we're going back to that now.
Well, you're going to do one department first and then move on to the next department, complete one?
Yeah.
Okay, that's all I want to make sure that it-
Jeff, I got a question on the PC replacements, on this 53,000, is this something that happens every year now?
No, this isn't something that happens every year, we haven't done this in four years. So we haven't purchased any new computers, well, I mean, except for new employees or if one went bad. But the plan is you replace them on a cycle, so this would be the first year of our cycle, and then it'll continue for two more years, we replace one-third of our computers every year on the cycle. So by, if this is year one, okay, we'll pay this year, we'll pay year two, we'll pay year three, then we wouldn't pay year four, we wouldn't pay anything. So it's like a cycle. So then we won't have to do it all at once.
Does this include the public works, water, police department, everything? It's not just right here in this building?
It's every computer for the city.
Mr. Cadell? Anyone else?
Okay. Next is the land acquisition fund, this is the fund that was established a couple of years ago. And initially, the city purchased three properties for a total of 1.9 million and issued some debt certificates and used some proceeds from the sale of some land and, and some economic development money to pay for those debt certificates and to pay off these land purchases. Right now, there's some $27,000 left in the fund. And if the city decides to proceed with any other property acquisition, what would happen is the, if you do some borrowing, the proceeds of the borrowing would go in here as revenues, and then the purchase of the property would go in as an expenditure. So at this point, there's nothing planned for land acquisition, all you've got is $1,000 of, of interest income that we estimate will be earned during 2008 or '09. If the council makes any decisions regarding land acquisition or borrowing, then we would amend the budget accordingly, but this is where we track it. Next fund is economic development fund. This was established in 2007 and it initially was set up with excess building department fees, which the council determined would be one-time only fees. And it does have a stated purpose of accumulating resources for economic development activities. As we said at the last meeting, the commuter parking lot receives a $350,000 transfer from this fund in order to help pay for the train station. So that is in this economic development fund budget right now, and it is also in the commuter parking lot fund budget. And the ending fund balance in the economic development fund, we estimate to be 87,339 at the end of 2008 or '09.
Christine Winger?
Thank you, so the slide before this, can you refresh my memory of what year are you recalling that we use money from the economic development fund to pay for those, proportionals, three properties? So the slide before this-
Well, it would have had to have been in 2006 or '07 because the way those property purchases were handled, they weren't all done at once. And I think we had to use the, the funds first, then issue the debt certificates, then unwind it the other way and pay back the debt certificates. So I think it was, I think those economic development funds were used first, for the first purchases, then the debt certificates were done.
Without paying back the economic development fund?
Well, right. Right. Yeah, because the only thing that's happened in the economic development fund since its inception is to collect interest on the fund balance, collect an annual payment from Harris Bank for $5,000, collect some excess building department fees from the general fund, that's it in terms of revenues, and then the money was transferred to land acquisition in 2007 or '08, 563,354, that's it.
So it's the 563 actually in last year's budget?
Yes, that was, it went to the, it went into the land acquisition fund to help pay for those property purchases. Because remember, we had 1.9, a little over 1.9 purchased, and you borrowed 1,250.
Right, so, so that was moved at budget time, or was it a budget amendment? So, that was moved at budget time, or was it a budget amendment later in the year? Do you recall?
No, I think it was in the original budget.
Okay, thank you.
The police pension fund. This is the fund that takes care of all of the activities of the police pension fund. This is a, considered a trust and agency fund. The city of Wooddale has no control over the fund. It doesn't approve expenditures of the fund, doesn't collect any of the revenues, except indirectly collects property taxes. And this fund has its own governing board. About all that Wooddale has to do with it is put money into it every year, part of the tax levy and anything additional that's been decided upon in order to fund the police pension fund. All of the pension payroll is paid from this fund. They have their own separate checking accounts. They have their own investment management. None of that, none of that money flows through the city at all. And in addition to the payroll expenses, or the pension payroll expenses, they pay an investment management fee to the investment manager who advises them on their investments for the fund. In this current general fund budget, we have a $488,770 contribution from the city to the police pension fund. And part of that is being paid for by the tax levy in the amount of $385,011. I think you have in your packet a copy of this tax levy worksheet. I think it was the last page. You'll see that's what we did, and the rest of it is coming out of the general fund.
Obviously, Mr. Mayor.
Several of us were alarmed at the IML last year when they did a study on Wooddale. And Wooddale, they showed Wooddale to be less funded than we thought we were. We don't think they're correct in their study, but nevertheless, that does raise an issue. And at some future date, not tonight, I'm going to ask you to make a decision whether you want to roll over unused police budgeted amounts at the end of this fiscal year into police pension and/or, or in addition, take the red light camera and make that a dedicated revenue source for police pension. Not a decision you're being asked to make tonight, but something to think about. The risk that I see is, once the state starts looking at it, there was an effort, there was a state bill last year where they tried to take over all of the police pensions. And given the way our state runs itself or doesn't run itself, I find that to be very alarming. And anything we can do to stay off their radar screens, I think, is greatly appreciated.
I'd like to say, I like the mayor's idea of dedicating the red light income or fines to the police pension. But I'd like a caveat, up to the point where the fund is solvent, you know, 100% funded. So, if their investments are good, their contributions are good, and they're at 100%, that the amount over the, amount of the red light income over what it takes to fund them at 100%, go back to the intended first purpose. Mayor, do you comment?
No, I'd agree 100% that, well, that is our goal of our funding, is to get to the 100% figure. And then, surplus revenue would be rolled back into general revenue, I presume.
Mr. Mayor, I did agree to put this on agenda down the line.
I just wanted to raise the issue for people to start thinking about it.
Okay. Can we continue on, please?
The last fund is the special service area fund. I have not given you the budget yet because, again, the city has nothing to really do with this fund. We do have to collect the property tax that is extended for these bonds, debt service, and we do pay out the, to the contractors, the construction costs for, right now, four special service areas, 811, I'm sorry, 5, 811, 1213, and 14. Because we're, we've got a foot in both camps in terms of our financial software, I was not able to get all the numbers together for special service area. Essentially, though, these bonds get paid twice a year, and the projects that are still in process are the special service areas 1213 and 14, which are in the industrial park. So, before this budget is put together for public consumption, I will bring it to you, but really, no one has any, no department has any input into this. We really just take the numbers off of the various bond schedules and drop them in place, and then put the corresponding real estate taxes in this fund as well. That's all that happens in there. Okay. The last three slides I have for you basically show what happened in the general fund since the last time it was reviewed by committee. If you look in the middle of your packet, you'll see a white sheet of paper that has, it's mostly filled in with a lot of line items that have been changed. What I did here was summarize it by department, what's happened, but you can see the details for each line item. Basically, we increased some revenues, and we decreased some expenditures, and we actually came up from a $473,495 deficit to an $18--